The Avalon City Council Meeting of Tuesday, February 4th is now in session. If we'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a few moments of silence for the passing of Michelle Bastudik and Ruth Blair, who was married to Dr. Blair. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Ponse.
Here.
Councilmember Schickling.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lovell.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. We have any oral or written communications? No? We have a presentation by our Finance Director, Matthew Baker.
He looks awfully sleepy.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. I have a quick presentation tonight, just a mid-year budget update, kind of going a bit out of order of what I would have liked. So the plan is for the next meeting, we'll be presenting the audited financials, and then we'll also be bringing this formally back as an item for you to vote on the amendment. So tonight's really just to go over what our proposals are as far as budget amendments. I also have memos prepared for Council, which kind of summarizes what I'm going to talk about tonight. And so that way, in two weeks, if you have any follow-up questions, we can address them at the next meeting. So this is really just to kind of give you a quick overview of where we're at at mid-year. So this first slide up here shows the fund balances in the major funds. I'm going to just really focus on general fund and harbor. You can see, heading into the year, we thought we'd have a beginning balance of about 14.8 million, and spending about 4 million of that, most of that is on capital projects. Similar in the harbor, beginning working capital of 2.8 million, and spending the entire available amount on all the capital projects that we have in the current budget. As you know, every year, we don't necessarily complete all of the projects that are in the capital budget, but if we were to complete all the capital projects, that would spend the entire balance of the harbor fund. Using the act million, and to put that into context, that's about 100% of our million. And to put that into context, that's about 100% of our annual operating budget in the general fund for the year. So that's a pretty healthy balance to be at. And again, this is all based on completing 100% of the capital projects that are in the budget for the year. Don't want to spend too much time on it, but basically, we're at where we would expect to be at mid-year. Generally, labor is a little over 50% at this point in the year, and that's because we have large UAL payments and workers' comp payments at the beginning of the year. And so that's why most of the labor accounts, when you look at it combined, were about 55% of budget, and that's typical if you look at prior years as well. Revenues, again, are kind of, as I've been reporting, on track to meet budget estimates, but we're not going to see the, you know, double-digit gains on prior years that we had in the prior years. We're probably looking at TOT somewhere between 7.5 and 7.7 million. Again, we budgeted 7.5, so from a budget standpoint, we're in good shape, but that is down 30 to 5% from kind of where we finished last year. And then, just real quick, contract services, often you're not going to see, it's going to be less than 50%, and that's because we'll, typically, we won't have paid December's contract by December 31st. It'd be paid in the following month. Again, not to spend too much time on this slide, but I'll have this available if Counselor or the public want to look at it in the future. It really just compares where we're at mid-year this year to where we were at mid-year the last two fiscal years, so to provide some better context for those figures. Again, this is kind of back what we've been saying. TOT, we're a little bit ahead of where we had planned for the budget, but we're behind if you compare us to the last couple fiscal years. So this is just a breakdown of hotel TOT through December 31st. You can see, we started strong, the first three months were kind of up from where we thought we'd be budgeted, and October, November are down a little more than we thought we'd be. But we're still up from the budget, about 87,000 for hotels through December 31st. Similarly, with vacation rentals, we started strong, but we're down in September and October, and are up compared budget by about 30,000. And so that's where I come up with, we'll probably finish around 7.7 million if we're on track. Even if all we did was match the budget estimates, we'd be at 7.6. So hopefully, we can do better with some nice weather in the spring, but we should be fine as far as the budget goes. And this is just a further breakdown of the operating expenditures by department and category. So you can see on the salaries and benefits, that's kind of that first column section. The percentage of budget is higher than 50%. I have a star by the other, that's, I need to make an adjustment. It's about how we did the labor allocation for successor agencies. We're on track in budget there, I just need to make a correction for that. But you can see, for labor, it's generally over 50%, but that has to do with the large payments we make at the beginning of the year. Going over the mid-year budget with department heads, there were a few adjustments or amendments that we were requesting. Again, kind of just as an education, the difference between the amendment and the adjustment, an amendment is where we would be asking Council for additional funds. An adjustment would be where we're taking funds from one budget account and reallocating them to another account to address a shortfall. And so as far as budget amendments go, and that's what I'm going to focus on, is the amendment side of things, we are requesting an additional 30,000 in utilities in the general fund. We also previously requested 75,000 for the contracted building inspection services. In this presentation, I'm including new requests, as well as the requests that were already approved during the first half of the year. So that came to Council, I believe, at the last meeting or the meeting prior, but I have it listed here, just to document it with all the other budget amendments. And then lastly, we do, are requesting an amendment of 16,000 for park facilities, and that's for the purchase of the new scoreboard. That purchase is going to be offset by pledged donations, but because there is an expenditure, I wanted to adjust the budget to reflect that. In the special revenue fund for traffic safety, we are requesting a budget amendment for a new position, and this would be a part-time parking enforcement officer. We are requesting 16,000 for salaries. Again, this position would only be filled the second half of the year, but in theory, it would be a continuing position. So in future budgets, the request would be more than that, 16,000. And then also, in the code enforcement side, we're requesting an additional 2,000 for animal control. So we try to do an adjustment where we can, but some of the funds where there's not a lot of accounts, it's hard to find money and reallocate budget, and so that's why we're requesting an amendment for some expenditures related to animal control. So moving to the harbor, again, I don't want to spend too much time on it, we're kind of where we would expect to be. You know, revenues are slightly ahead of where we had budgeted. Expenditures are on track to meet the budget estimates. Again, this is a breakdown for the last two years, so you can see kind of where we stand right now. So for reading it, cross-channel warfage for the operating account, we're at 1.349 million. At mid-year last year, we were at 1.26, and then in mid-year fiscal '23, we're at 1.32. So you can see, we're a little ahead of where we were historically on cross-channel. Cruise ships, it looks like we're behind, but it really is how the cruise ships were scheduled this year. We have more cruise ships arriving in the second half of the year this year compared to last year. The total number of cruise ships is about the same, but for whatever reason, we had more requests in the spring than we did in the fall for repositioning. Again, this is a breakdown of cross-channel warfage. You can see, we're trending a little bit ahead of where we had in the budget. We're up 66,000 going into the second half of the year. Again, these numbers are showing cross-channel warfage is slight, on pace to be slightly higher than it was last year and the year prior, but not as high as the high we saw in fiscal '22. So it'll finish somewhere between 3.9 and 4.2. Similarly, with cruise ship, this is just showing that we're on track where we had estimated in the budget. We had some cancellations in October and November, and that's why we didn't hit the budget numbers, but fortunately, the occupancy was higher than what we had estimated in July and August, and so that kind of canceled out some of those cancellations. So again, we're on track to hit the budget estimate of 1.8 million for cruise ship warfage. Again, similarly, this is a breakdown of harbor operating expenditures. Salaries and benefits, maintenance, operations, contract services. The harbor capital, if you see in the contract services in the far corner, that's going to be corrected through an adjustment. There's a coding issue, and I just didn't update it in the table. There's a capital charge that was booked to a contract service. So for budget amendments, there were several budget amendments requested by department heads. Maintenance of premises for an additional 25,000. And I think some of this is just as we become more familiar working with the new department heads, figuring out what the true need is in the department. And so we are requesting an additional 25,000 for maintenance of premises, an additional 25,000 for mooring maintenance, and additional 10,000 for float storage. The other large item is, we didn't include in the budget rent at the fuel dock for the, you know, fuel tanks. So we do rent a space of land out in there. So we're requesting an amendment of 83,000 to cover the annual rent costs. And other major funds were kind of, as I said, right where we expected to be. The one amendment we do have related to sewer, saltwater, and solid waste is for odor control. We are requesting an additional 60,000 for polymers and other chemicals related to odor control. This account has gone up considerably in the last couple of years, and some of that has to do with the quantities needed to maintain compliance with requirements. Some of it's just to make sure that we can keep the odor under control out at the treatment plant, and then just in general, the cost of the materials has gone up as well. And so it's kind of a combination of, we're using more, and the supplies are costing us more, is what's driving this increase. And lastly, for the operating budgets, internal service expenditures. I'll have a detailed list if Council wants to review any individual accounts, but again, we're kind of where I would expect to be with a few exceptions, and those exceptions we'll cover in the amendment requests. So our utilities were a little higher than I would expect, and doing some digging into it, the reason for that is we had some billings from April, May, and June that didn't get billed until September, I believe, and so that kind of skewed the amount we had planned in the budget. And so we're requesting an amendment to, 5,000 and 15,000 for those two accounts to adjust for that. For insurance, at the time of the budget, we don't know what our final insurance costs are for property, general liability, cyber, et cetera. We do our best to estimate, but the cost ended up coming in considerably higher than where I'd estimated. So I am requesting an amendment of 80,000 to cover that increased insurance cost. I'm hoping some of that, we're going to be able to recoup in the sense that I had a high number budgeted for legal expenses. And right now, we really haven't had a ton of litigation costs, so knock on wood, we might not need that full 80,000. But I didn't, I didn't want to take from that account, knowing that anything could happen in the next six months. But I think there's some reason to be optimistic that we won't need that full 80,000. And then lastly, in vehicle equipment maintenance, we're requesting an additional 40,000. My understanding that that's, some of it is with the new fleet getting in, we have to purchase items to kind of get those trucks. So we buy the truck, but it's not fully equipped with all the, I'm probably the worst person to talk to this, but it doesn't have all the bells and whistles that a fully-running truck that we use in the field would have. Some of the increased cost is related to that. Some of the increased cost in that is also just due to doing a better job of timely oil change, tire rotation, tire replacement, things of that nature. So we are seeing some expenditure growth in that account. That's my understanding of why we're making this request. So lastly, real quick on the capital projects. This is a summary of all of the capital projects in the general fund. The first couple I'll touch on, because they're the ones that have the biggest spend. Crescent Avenue Stairs, fiscal year-to-date, we've spent 416,000. The SCBA's are the self-contained breathing apparatus for the fire department. Came in at 311,000, and I believe that is everything we need for that, so there's going to be some budget savings. We didn't end up spending the full 400,000 that was budgeted, unless...
We got less than 10 left.
Okay, so we'll still have some budget savings, even though there's some spend left. Five Corners, you can see on here, we've only spent 196,000, but again, all these figures are as of December 31st. Month of January, we've already spent 500,000 towards the project, and so that number is going to continue to rise. And I believe we do have some upcoming meetings where we're going to be providing updates on the Five Corners project, and I can work with Bob to make sure we're including a budget slide in that as well. Next, in the harbor, some of the bigger projects, the vehicle replacement. The 111,000 relates to a new boat that we purchased, and that was the electric boat that was offset with grant funds. And that's where that spend is. Also have some spend related to the club dock pier replacement. And I know we have a lot of discussions of plans in the spring for some major projects in the harbor, so I do expect that spend to go up. Also happy to report, though, the Harbor Master Building, that's for the new roof. We budgeted 100,000, and we came in under budget at 90,000 for that project. So shout out to Kevin, I don't get to say that often, but I'm happy we came under budget for that project. So lastly, in the other funds, so this is anything that's not harbor or general fund. On the 206 East Whitley retaining wall, site prep, we've spent 415,000 to date, or as of December 31st. The street administration, that relates to the global paving project, and I believe it's either on this agenda or an upcoming agenda. We're going to be going out to RFP for the street improvements. Let's see if there's any. Lastly, on the vehicle maintenance, we've purchased a few new vehicles this year, the biggest one being a new flatbed truck that Council approved, I believe, in December. We do have a few amendments related to the CIP budget. Crescent Avenue Stairs was previously amended during the first half of the fiscal year by 358,000 for a total project cost of 850,000. I believe we will be coming back to Council to give an update on that project as well. Vehicle replacement, we did amend the budget when we purchased that flatbed by 15,000. So those have already been approved by Council, but I wanted to include them in my mid-year update. We are requesting an additional 37,000 to build a vehicle impound lot. We've actually already spent that project, but our plan was to find the money and savings in other capital projects if we don't get the amendment for that. And so the question is, how have we made those improvements? We are requesting 37,000, though, related to those improvements. Then lastly, as you're aware, we have a new IT manager who's done a great job, kind of looking at our system and what our needs are. And one of the requests we have is to switch kind of from our current computer systems to more of an individual desktop laptop situation. Michael could speak to the reasons why much better than I can, and so that's part of the reason we wanted to present tonight. So if you do have questions in the next two weeks, I'm sure he'd be happy to explain all the reasons why, from a security standpoint, and just an efficiency standpoint, why these changes are necessary. But we are requesting an amendment of 60,000 for new workstations essentially for all the city employees, as well as replacing the two servers with one new server. Just one thing to note, if we do switch to these individual laptops, it will change the licensing requirements for software, and so we will be requesting an additional 12,000 in the IT maintenance account, and that would likely be an annual ongoing cost. And again, Michael can speak to the reasons why this improvement's necessary much better than I can. And so that is the mid-year budget update. Again, I have some memos prepared that kind of go over everything that I just talked about right now. I'll put the copy of the presentation up for the public, if anyone wants to look at it in more detail. And the plan is, at the next Council meeting, to include it in either general business or on consent. So Council will have an opportunity to review the proposed amendments there, and if so, authorize the amendments to the budget that we're going to be requesting. So unless there's any questions for tonight, that's my update.
I just had one question. On the 30,000 increase for the utilities, do you know if that was an increase due to the cost of the utilities themselves, or if it was an increase in use from something that we didn't account for?
So in the, and this is one that I'm kind of starting looking into more detail. The increased utilities at the harbor, if that's the one we're talking about, is likely due to the construction that we had going on at the fuel dock. And the reason I say that is looking at where the meters were that were significantly higher, and the timing. So July, August was significantly higher in the harbor than September, October, November. And so I don't think it's a leak situation, it is a water meter. I think it's likely because of the construction, they were using water to keep the dust down and things of that nature. The general fund increase of 30,000, a lot of that increase that I was looking at appears to be at the cemetery. And again, I need to speak with Public Works, but it doesn't appear month over month. There are certain months where it was higher. I'm guessing it has to do with the fact that we haven't had rain compared to prior years is what's driving that, or it could just be additional attention and maintenance we're doing up there. But with the increases, we are going to be looking into them in more detail, just to make sure that it's not a leak or an issue of that sort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, department head reports.
Come on, John.
I'll start, since I'm already up. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Like I mentioned, we just did mid-year budget. Next meeting, my plan is to present on our audited financials. And other than that, you know, just kind of catching up and getting caught up on emails. So if there are members of the public that reached out while I was gone, I do apologize if I haven't gotten back to you, and I will get back to you as soon as I can, so.
Thank you, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Allegra, Fire Chief. I'm not going to make him speak, because I did it, but Juan Cisneros, one of our firefighters, started in October, October, online at what we, at the Teaks Fire Academy. So since we don't have a fire academy here, he did three months of online work, did all the didactic part, and did really well, because you have to have over 80% just to get to the academy. And then on Ju, January 2nd or 3rd, he flew out to Texas and just got home on Sunday. So he's got four weeks of... So, he's got four weeks of hands-on in the largest fire ground field in the world, in the country at least. But he did really well. He was about 94% in the class. They lost about six or eight students. It's not easy, and he took all the extra tests and passed everything. So, I just wanted to recognize Juan. Come up here real quick. For all the work and dedication that he's put in for the last like four months.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Juan.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Very cool.
Congratulations, Juan.
Very cool. In January, we ran 58 total calls. Last week, attended the LCW conference with law enforcement, fire, and HR down in San Diego. It's always good to see all the different management things that they help us out on. And then, just also wanted to, I'll say this every time, March 15th, we are doing St. Baldryx down on the stage. So, I'm shaving my head. Last year, Yoli shaved her head, Joe shaved her head. So, Braden, Pedrosa, and Benjamin, Yoli's grandson, cancer. So, we're going to shave our heads down on Front Street on the stage, working on a food vendor and drinks off to the side. And we've already got a couple barbers and cosmetologists to shave the head. So, pretty soon, we're going to start. We have a family from the mainland, the Garzas, that grew up here. Their son, it's his 20th year doing it. He said he's shaving his head every year since his little cousin found out he had cancer till they find the cure. So, it's his 20th year of doing it. So, they're coming, they're bringing some of their Long Beach friends, and we're going to pretty soon be going around getting raffle prizes. We need a few more barbers and cosmetologists, and I think it'll be a fun, hopefully have some green beer down there. And it'll be a fun event.
15th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Community Mayor, City Council, City Staff, Matthew King, Sheriff's Captain, Avalon Station. Since the last meeting, we had 200 observations made by the deputies and 104 calls for service. We made 21 traffic stops and five pedestrian stops. There were two arrests, one was for sexual battery and the other one was for drunken public. And we stored two full-size motorcycles based on being unregistered or unlicensed. And we stored one e-motorcycle for it not being legal on the road. I'd like to take this time to kind of discuss the Sheriff's Department policies on immigration. I know there's been a lot going on recently since the inauguration of Donald Trump, and I kind of wanted to get it out there and make sure the public understands what our stance is. So, in 2017, the California State Senate, they passed Bill 54, which prohibited law enforcement, any local law enforcement, from using their resources to assist with immigration, federal immigration. The Sheriff's Department, since the very beginning, as that became policy, and it's something that we can't legally even assist immigration whatsoever, regardless of what the request is, unless, with one exception, if it's a violent illegal alien, at that point, we can assist. Outside of that, we can never ask someone's immigration status. We can't assist with that. Our resources cannot be used in that matter, and if we did that, we'd be violating the law. So, it's simply something that the Sheriff's Department doesn't do. We don't work with the federal government when it comes to that. And as a matter of fact, when it comes to immigration law, that's a civil issue. Sheriff's Department deals with criminal issues. So, they're really separate altogether. It's not something that we do. I know today, we did have Customs and Border Patrol, they were out here on a boat, and there was some issues with the public kind of seeing them. And I was unfortunately downtown dealing with a meeting with the sheriff, but Sergeant Grayson Klein was here. I'd like to explain kind of what he saw and what happened.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Evening. So, today, we had one of our deputies out on patrol, Jeff Montero, and he called me and said, hey, it looks like there's some federal cops here. And so, he sent me a picture of them, and as soon as he sent me a picture, my phone started blowing up from the locals saying, Grayson, what's going on? Should we be worried? I got calls from some city officials asking me what's going on. So, when that happens, I call the Harbor Patrol because they're the first line of sight for us. And I spoke with the employee out there and said, hey, is there a boat out there? And the employee said, yes, there's Customs and Border Protection, and they're here to have lunch. We put them on float five. So, I immediately went, I spoke with the city manager. I went out in the field to locate these guys because we had not gotten a courtesy call about why they were here. And when you went through town, anybody that was in town saw how frantic everybody was. And it was sad for all of us to see. So, I found out where they were eating, and I went up to these guys and said, why are you here and why haven't you called me? And they said, well, we're the feds, why do I need to call you? I said, well, this is our island, and if something happens to you, it's an officer safety issue. I need to know when you're in our town. So, I gave them my business card, and I said, going forward, this is what we would like to see. And we do that with every agency. And it's kind of a courtesy in our profession just for officer safety, because if they are doing something here and something happens to them, and heaven forbid, there's a shooting or there's a fight, and we have no idea that there's another law enforcement agency in our area of responsibility, it's a problem for us. So, we exchanged some pleasantries. I gave them my card, and hopefully, moving forward, we'll know when they're here. After that occurred, my phone was still just getting a ton of phone calls. So, I went out personally to at least 10 businesses because they went from open to close, and there was a lot of scared people. So, I went to all the businesses that I knew, everybody on Front Street, and reassured them. These guys got their food, they went back out to float five, they ate their lunch, and they left. And what they're concerned with me was, they said, we've been coming here for years just to have lunch, and we don't report. And I said, well, where I come from, you report. That's just a courtesy in law enforcement. And here, it's a little different because they come off the water, and when they get in town, this is a small town, and everybody sees what's going on. So, as the Sheriff's Department, like Matt said, we do not assist or get involved, but I wanted to address them and let them know that it was a concern for us that they were here, especially with the administration. And they were, we're Customs and Border Protection. So, after everything that's going on in yesterday's event, and then today, it was all, the timeline was really scary for a lot of people. So, like I said, I got to at least 10 businesses and assured a bunch of people. And so, that's where we are going forward. We're going to work to, it would have been nice, if we would have known sooner, I don't have a Facebook or a social media, but one of our agents that does, whether it's Matt or Irma or Jeff, could have put out, hey, guys, there's a group of federal officers here, they're just having lunch. And it would have kind of lowered the temperature and, you know, taken away the fright from everybody. So, that's kind of what we're looking at going forward. But it happened so quick. Jeff called me, and like I said, within 30 seconds, I must have had 10 phone calls. So, that's what occurred today. Hopefully, going forward, we do get a call, but they don't have to. And if they come here to do some sort of operation, we're not going to participate, and we may not know, but we'll know when they come in the harbor. And that was today's events.
They had to come all this way for lunch? Yeah.
I can't get into what I said, ma'am, but we had the same conversation.
Thank you. Sounds like you handled that quite well.
Any questions at all?
I don't think so. I'd want to say thank you for answering my questions earlier, too. I appreciate it. And I think the biggest goal for all of us is to try to bring down the level of fear, to make sure people are aware of what's happening and what their rights are, and to hope that we all keep it out for each other, which clearly, with all of the things that happened last night and today, it is that way. So, that's great, and I just want to say thank you very much.
The goal of the Sheriff's Department really is for the community to be, you know, feel safe and comfortable around us and willing to talk to us. If we were out there trying to figure out their immigration status and do something about that, we would lose all credibility as far as being someone to actually speak to and to come to us as a victim or witness or whatever else. It doesn't do us any good at all to be out there doing that thing. At the same time, you know, federal government could come over anytime they want it on public land and do what they want to do, and hopefully, we'll find out as soon as we possibly can.
And you'd mentioned, too, I think, something that was good to point out, which was, you're not gathering status information. There's nothing in a call that you're asking for status. It's not something that's tracked, it's not something that's documented, it's not something people should feel concerned about having information from any interactions with the sheriff being available to anyone. Again, because you're not cooperating, but also, it's not collected in the first place, so it's not an issue. Just wanted to let people know that out there.
Exactly. We've gone so far with the department to, even when we have an inmate in custody, and he's released, and he's got a federal immigration warrant, we still release him. They still go out in the public. That's not something we hold on people at all anymore. We don't track immigration status whatsoever.
Thank you.
I just got back, oh, Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Masters, in case anybody forgot. Just got back from a whirlwind road trip around Southern California doing floats and boats. So, I'll just tell you a little about that fun trip. A float one, I'm sure you all wonder where that is. It's over in Al Larson's Boat Yard. So, I talked to them yesterday, and they have like turned that thing around real quickly. So, it's probably back in the water already. So, it'll come back the end of this week or the beginning of next week. And so, hopefully, we'll get it back installed early next week. That's the plan, depending on weather. Also, went up to Matt Baker, I mentioned it earlier about the electric boat. So, went up to Venturi yesterday and sea-trial the electric boat, the Vita Seal. It did really well. It was a little cold out there, but, so we've got that taken care of, at least the sea-trial part of it. We have to wait two weeks for our boatyard here in Pedro to be able to bring it down, put the electronics on and stuff. So, hopefully, within a month, it'll be over here. So, that's the plan, to get it over within a month. And then, made it down to San Diego this morning, went down to Blue Water Docks down in San Diego. This is the company that we're going to have build the float, the dock at Barbara Pearson. So, it's actually kind of a new construction. It's all aluminum framing, and it's actually pretty neat. It's pretty high-tech. So, down and talked to them, and got the specs going on that. So, that project, they'll probably start the build on that next week or the week after. So, it should be here shortly as well with a new ramp. And they're kind of, you know, the good thing about that is it will allow us to have a dock in there pretty much year-round. We'll be able to lift the ramp, we'll have a lifting mechanism. So, we'll basically have more dock space that not just dinghies, but, you know, power boats that anybody can actually use. So, that'll actually really improve the functionality out there at the mall for boat traffic. We got two guys at 832 training right now, so PCA 32 training at Golden West, Philip Ponce and Rodrigo Alcala over there right now. We have several other guys that are going off to Department of Boating and Waterways training in the springtime. So, it is training season for our guys. And for stats, so this is for the month of January. So, this is the whole month of January here, we're going with, we've got five Baywatch assists, 22 enforcement calls, 267 patrols, and one Coast Guard assist. And for the month of January, we had 307 boats arrive for a total of 2,628 mooring nights. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions?
We're good.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor, Community Service. It's a busy month for us this February. The Community Service Department, in partnership with the Conservancy and California Department Wildlife, is doing an introductory archery class for 25 fourth through sixth graders. The class is held on March 15th from 7:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It will be held at Middle Ranch Range. The Conservancy will drive the kids out, the CDFW will be teaching the class. We are looking at expanding this course to other grade levels as well as adult classes. We are about 80% full right now. There's one class that hasn't turned theirs in, so we assume that we're going to get the full 25 filled. The kids seem very excited about it, and we're excited being able to work with the Conservancy as well as CDFW on this event. Avalon Youth Basketball is starting March 2nd. Signups are open now for TK through eighth grade. The fee is $35 per child, and that includes their NBA jersey. Evaluation day will be on February 15th. For more information, go to cityofavalon.com. We also have dance tech and karate are back on. They're still taking signups this week. These popular courses run for an eight-week session in kids from five to 18 years of age. Karate is $60 for their eight-week session, and dance is $85 for their eight-week session. Sign up now at cityofavalon.com. Jiu-Jitsu classes are running right now for adults, three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And they now have a Friday 12:00 p.m. lunch class. So, you can go to as many classes as you like for just $100 a month. They are now starting youth classes for kids six to 10 years old on Wednesdays from 6:00 to 7:00, and that will be an eight-week session, starting March 5th for only $80 for the eight weeks. Sign up now at cityofavalon.com. As a parent, I know it's hard to find someone to watch your kid on Valentine's Day so you can remain married. So, we are helping to add romance back to your marriage, and we have enough staffing for it as well. So, I would like to ask my wife out that night right now, so we will be going, we will have an opportunity to get a date night. Sign up at cityofavalon.com.
You're going to skip the restaurant, aren't you?
A reminder that Vons is hosting a vaccine clinic at St. Catherine Alexander Church, February 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. You can get the new RSV shot, that's for 60-plus. Flu shots, hepatitis B, the Prevnar 20, which is for ammonia, I can't really pronounce this one, Shigex is for herpes zoster, T-DAP, that's a tetanus, diptheria, and pertussis. I'm not sure if I said that right, but that's the T-DAP shot, as well as the new COVID-19 shot. Walk-ins are welcome. Please bring insurance card to the clinic. Vaccines are free with most insurances, including the RSV and the COVID. Also, you will get 10% off groceries with every immunization. Last one we have, we have our primetimers, 55 and over. We're doing afternoon tea at the museum. Please join us for enchanting, demure afternoon of tea, conversation, and delightful company. This will be on February 26, 2025, from 11:00 to 1:00. We're asking that you bring your favorite tea for a tea swap, as well as we will have our own tea, finger foods, and we will have a dosing that will show us to the two new exhibits that they have at the museum that day. Again, that's February 26 from 11:00 to 1:00. Is there any questions?
Speaking of primetimers, are you planning on bringing back the water aerobics?
We have the water aerobics that go through the summer all the way to October, but because of the weather, it's shut down. It starts back up in May.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to make, see if it was going to continue, so, cool. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Assistant City Manager.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, City Council, Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Just a reminder, we're in the midst of vehicle season, so starting at 8:30 in the morning, come on down to City Hall and get your sticker. You can also go online, cityofavalon.com/vehicles to renew online. It's $50 until April 1st. And then, on March 1st, we're going to try out Saturday Drive-Thru for those folks who have paid online. And then, just another reminder related to vehicles, the waitlist, the blue sticker vehicle waitlist, we are in the 21st century. So, this is your reminder to update your mailing address. Very important. This is how our vehicle clerk notifies you if your name has come up on the waitlist. So, if you've moved in the last 25 years, come on down and see Rosio here at City Hall and make sure it's your most current mailing address. And then, as an update for our reverse vending machine, I have a meeting on Friday with CalRecycle, CRNR, and Olens, and hopefully, I have a great update for you guys at the next council meeting. And then, we are currently running a recruitment for a parking enforcement officer, part-time parking enforcement officer, the new position that was approved by City Council. Applications are due February 14th, and you can apply online, cityofavalon.com/jobs.
Any questions?
Any questions? No good. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Jamie Milock, Maintenance Superintendent of Public Works. Excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, but Jackie's absent today. I just wanted to chime in. So you've obviously seen our updates, my updates I provided last week. I don't really have much else to add. This week, we're going to be mostly focusing on the tow yard again. We're hoping to get that wrapped up here very soon. We'll be, have been and will continue to be prepping for the rains. We don't anticipate any issues with the rains coming in tonight, but I know some heavier rains are predicted for later in the week. So prepping for that. And on that note too, we are going to be installing new gates for Pebble Beach Road on both ends, sorely needed. So I don't know if we'll get to those this week, but those will be installed very soon. Anybody have any other questions for me?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Let's see, first I'll start off with some good news. Good news being that we've been working with Circuit as we've reported earlier about getting a call-in number. That number is now operational. We have it on the city website, cityofavalon.com. It is 562-534-2820. I wish it was an easier number to remember, but that's what it is. So once you get it in your phone, you can use that to both call for a ride and pay by phone. So it'll make, you know, we've encountered a number of residents that have had difficulty either using the app or not able because they don't have the phone to use an app. So this way you can call for the ride and pay by phone. So hopefully it'll solve those problems. We would still strongly encourage users that use it quite often to download the app and use the app, just simply because from a scheduling standpoint, it works. That's how it's designed to work. But you know, that number is out there. So we've already pushed that out to the residents that have inquired.
Let me just little comment.
Sure.
I think that's a step in the right direction. However, I've heard from a couple of people that, you know, it's like, oh, it'll be two minutes we're on our way. And then they'll cancel because they'll go, because the dispatcher, whoever that person is wherever, would rather give them a ride, somebody that there's five people getting in the thing instead of the one. So they're being bumped. So I'm just hoping at some point we can actually have dispatch local with communication to all of the guys to find out, where are you? I'm on this side of town. So but this person in Long Beach won't know where people are, I don't think.
Not likely. And that's probably, I mean, the reality of it is with the app is it's not an individual deciding who's picking who. It's all AI that's operating that simply based on location and they're not knowing, you know, they're not prioritizing five over two. So we're continuing to work with this. I mean, by all benchmarks, the program has still been wildly successful. We haven't reached a year yet. We're excited to reach that year benchmark to really look at what those numbers are year over year. And we'll continue to work with it. And Circuit's been great to work with. I mean, they don't have a call-in number in any of their other cities that they're working in. I mean, this is it. So they've been, they've been willing to do that for us and will continue to work with that to make sure it's satisfying everybody's needs.
Has the staffing been appropriate? Do they have any problems with staffing or do they seem to be okay?
No, they seem to be okay with staffing. We're hopeful that we can, in the spring, come to council and ask, we would like to add additional vehicles by way of a lease with Circuit. They're in a position where they can lease vehicles to us to add, put more vehicles online too. And I think the need, you know, calls for it, the number of people that we've had.
Okay, great. So is that call-in number, is that still just like the app, it's like same day right now? You can't, you can't call ahead and schedule for like, oh, I'm going to be on the first boat tomorrow. Can you pick me up tomorrow?
Correct. It's call-in for that, but you're going to call in and get somebody.
So always plan ahead. If you're on the 7:50 boat, call them at like 7:15?
I would call at seven and get in the queue. Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think people that have found success that I've talked to, to get that 7:50 boat, say they call at seven and it works for them. They get in the queue. So we continue to encourage people to use it. And you know, this next item, just in the category of, you know, elections have consequences. The city has a significant, as Council knows, a significant amount of money in federal funding for both the Mole Project and Pebble Beach Road. Over the last several weeks, ten to 14 days, we have gone, you know, ping pong back and forth on is that money going to be available? Is it not going to be available? Currently, we are operating under the position that it is going to be available, but as you know, we could go, that was different. We hope that it stays this way because it's very difficult to continue that. We have a lot of time, a lot of money and are ramping up on the Mole Project in particular. If that federal money is not available, it significantly impacts, if not kills, that project. This is critical to the needs of the city and it's very important. And just to, you know, to have this, that maybe it's not going to be available, put us kind of in a panic mode of how do we still go down this path and where are we going? Because we cannot fund this project without those federal funds. So I just wanted to bring that, you know, Council, I know you're aware of that, but bring that to everybody's attention that, you know, this on again, off again is not conducive to getting these projects done. So let's just hope that we're on solid ground now. And then finally, I just want to mention that in the audience now, we have Amy Vasquez, President of Sagecrest Planning and Environmental. As you know, Sagecrest Planning and Environmental is on the agenda tonight on consent, but I wanted to recognize Amy because it's something, being on consent, you might not have that or you won't have that opportunity to necessarily have a conversation with her. But I just want to indicate that Amy and her team have been a great partner over the last two years with the city. We've accomplished quite a bit in the planning department. We have quite a bit queued up to go forward. We highly recommend continuing this relationship and are excited to do it. And I appreciate Amy coming out today. She met with staff and then just being here if there's any questions or concerns from Council. Thank you.
City Council. Oh, are you there?
Yes, I am, but I have no messages or comments tonight.
I knew that. Okay. Thanks for being on board. Councilmember report.
I'll go first because I have short. I attended my first Community Services Policy Committee meeting last Friday in Sacramento. It was nice to meet in person for the first time in quite a long time. And it was nice to go home to Sacramento where I grew up. We set the agenda for the year and the committee is focusing on homelessness and mental health. Those are their two top items that we're going to be discussing. But yeah, it's going to be good. And I just wanted to shout out to our librarian, Paul. In our little tabletop, they were very impressed that our librarian comes and speaks to City Council once a month. So kudos to you for that. Thank you.
Yes, Enya?
I have a lot going on. I'm doing stuff every day from the moment I wake up to the moment I go to sleep. And even then, I'm still doing stuff. But nothing in particular that I want to point out, just to everybody that feels comfortable enough to reach out for me, to me with any questions or concerns or information that they need validated or confirmed, know that you can absolutely keep doing that. That's what I'm here for. Even if I wasn't in the sea, I would have done it anyways. And so also thank you to every city staff that's been willing to help. Thank you to Captain Matt King, also to Grayson. They've been willing to communicate with us and just alleviate whatever panic and stress we knew was going to come our way. So with all the chaos going on, thank you. And I know it won't be the last time. So we'll be getting better at this. So and anybody showing support, thank you so very much.
Debbie Wright.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that all four of us attended Congressman Garcia's webinar on the whole immigration issue and to give us toolkits and pointers and resources and support to go ahead with this. And so, you know, just the community knows that along with the Sheriff's Department, we are all very seriously engaged and working on this issue. And thank you so much for all you do, you, Sani, in this.
I know. I just speak earlier a lot because it is very dear to my heart. And even now, I feel like I just have this big knot in my throat. So sorry.
But the only other thing I got is Sean Brannick is doing his last Kids at Play. He's been doing it for 30 some odd years and this production that he's staging right now, excuse me, sorry, will be the last one. So I think it's going to go up in like a month or something like that. So keep watching Facebook and Flyers on Windows and stuff like that and go see that. And then Avalon Community Players is going to be staging You Can't Take It With You, which is a great show. It's kind of like it's a Wonderful Life kind of a thing. And that just got cast and that will be on Mother's Day weekend and I will be in it. So will our librarian.
Beautiful.
Who's playing? Mary, who's playing Donald?
Oh, I don't remember. I'd have to look on my phone.
Because in high school, I played Donald.
Oh, did you?
Oh, that's cute.
Attended the Immigration Rights discussion with Congressman Garcia's office and then also attended the next day, which I believe Assistant City Manager Francis was on, the call regarding the freeze, not a freeze, could be a freeze, might be a thing regarding federal funds. So I want to thank his office for really helping to provide information, to provide an avenue to get information when we hear things or don't hear things. And I'm super thankful for that. One of the biggest things I just wanted to touch on to kind of bounce off of everyone's discussion tonight is just making sure that people, regardless of status, have an understanding of what their rights are when it comes to their personal property, when it comes to being at work. So first off, just want to make it clear that we have cards. I know that some of us have gotten them from members of the community. I printed out a ton. They're over on the table over there. There's also a lot of uncut pages, versions of the cards. You're welcome to take some for people if you think it may be helpful or beneficial to them. But the biggest thing is to know that if you are on your own private property and the people at your door do not have a signed judicial order from a judge, a warrant from a judge, then you are not required to open the door to them. You are not required to speak to them. You may remain silent. If for some reason you're out in public, you can ask if you have the right to leave and ask if they have a warrant. And if they don't have those things, you are welcome to stop talking with them. You have the right to remain silent, just like anyone does in any situation when approached by law enforcement. I think the biggest thing I want to relay to people is the probably worst thing that you can do, and I think this isn't any law enforcement situation, is run. It gives them a reason to then follow you. I know it can be difficult that your first response might be that flight mechanism that kicks in and wants to run away. Stand your ground. If you are comfortable, discuss with your boss at work. If they're comfortable saying this is private property, you're not welcome to come in here unless you have a warrant to do so. I think that understanding your rights, whether your status is any one of a number of things, is a good thing to do. If you have questions, the site that I visited was the Immigration Rights Council. So it's IRLC.org. And they have a ton of resources, including these cards that you can print out on your own if you want to, and information on rapid response networks and assistance from lawyers if you need legal help. Part of what I think we want to do is we want to see people following the law and trying to gain status for citizenship and trying to make sure that whatever they have in terms of paperwork is up to date. And so we're also trying to get more information to share in those areas as well. But most of all, I just would love it if there was a way that we can make people not live in fear of this. You should be able to go about your day and work in the community you work in and provide services for the people that you support and work for without having this fear. So having the knowledge of your rights, having the ability to know what you can do, I think is integral to trying to make everyone feel safe. The other piece of information that I'll just put out there, because we did discuss it and it's a question that I have for people that we interact with and wanted to discuss it with Circuit as well. There was legislation and a bit of a law fight and Scott Campbell, you may have some info on this, regarding Greyhound buses and utilizing transportation as private property, even though they may have regulations that come from the federal government. And so Greyhound won in that instance where they were able to say that their buses were private property and therefore unless ICE had a judicial warrant, they were not able to board the vehicle. And so that question was posed regarding metro buses, the Catalina Express, the Flyer, the other city buses and micro transit services. So I don't know if that's something that we can get some guidance on and some information, both for us in the city and then also just to be able to help share with kind of that coalition of elected officials that are trying to get information out there to the general public. Oh, and then I'm attending COG tomorrow and then the AQMD city selection vote on Thursday, which is now remote, so I don't have to stay over for a second night, which is great.
Okay. Hey, the, I will be doing Zoom with SCAG on Thursday. And on the 13th of February, we're going to Supervisor Janice Hahn is having a mayor's luncheon in Sarita, so I'll be there. So something that we need to discuss at some point is because, and I've kind of mentioned it to you, and I don't, and this is vehicle season, with the lack of housing, people are moving in with other people. And so now you've got the deal where the person that lives there has a vehicle and now I'm having to rent a room, but I have a vehicle and they're going to come up here and they're going to say, you can only have one. I don't know how we deal with this because it's kind of not fair because if they've had to move in with somebody, you know, just to, because they lose their housing. So I don't know what we, what we can do. Just throwing it out there. And then I think we put money for the homeless in the budget. Did we put $5,000 or $10,000 in the budget?
At least $5,000.
Okay. Because with the bad weather coming up, I don't know how we can help. And I know the harbor, I don't, I don't exactly know what the harbor does. If you try to get them off for bad weather, are you putting them up in a hotel or are they responsible for taking care of themselves, Harbor Master?
In the harbor, ma'am, I'm sorry, in the harbor, we are bringing people into the harbor and putting them in a safe position. Those that are not in the harbor already, we are, we are bringing them in and putting them in a safe position.
Putting them in a safe position, like a place to spend the night?
On their, on their vessels.
On their vessel, okay. Well, we have a few homeless folk out there and with bad weather coming, I don't know what they do to stay warm. And not all, not all of our homeless are real healthy or have families they can go in with for the night. So I don't know how we could help with, and this is maybe a Dave Hard, if we have some money, how should, how do we want to spend it? Anyway, so that's something to figure out. Okay. That's all I have for today. Okay, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people in the audience to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Hello, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Two shout-outs? What do other libraries do? They don't, of course you should come to council and talk about your library. Why wouldn't you do that? Last week, I had a visit by a ventriloquist. I only mention it because I thought this is not going to work. These kids aren't going to like anything that old-fashioned. The kids went crazy. It was like 1940s ventriloquist, little man, hello, my name, and they went crazy. So old school is good school. Let me just say that. Coming up on Valentine's Day, before you drop the kids off at, right here, bring them to see Wacko the Magician, who's coming back to the island. He's funny. He's, he's really funny. He's, I think, got a slightly new show, which I think is good, but his audience wouldn't remember it from last time anyway. He was last year, about two or three years ago. That's going to be on the 14th, sponsored by our friends of the library. Thank you. I'm also continuing this tradition of the ice cream book party. You read a book at the library, you get a free ice cream. Yeah, I'm bribing them. I'm not ashamed. I'll do whatever I need to do to get people to read books on this island. Pretty good story time every Saturday at 11. Our toddler playtime every Friday at 11. I do a very small story time. If I have any people who come to the toddler playtime, I bring out a lot of toys. Start with a small story time. That's kind of fun. We're going to make a Valentine's Day card on the 13th. We have Chuck Liddell's history talks. He's getting very focused on certain things, like last time he did a talk about the history of the stables. So he's like keying it into things that are happening recently on the island. Very interesting. And then early March, we're going to have a new magician called School of Astonishment. He's English. Don't know much about him. I've heard very good reviews from my colleagues at other libraries. And late March, we're going to do And late March, we're going to do, um, a visit from the Barnes Del Art Center to do art, uh, projects. And that is my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Two shout-outs. Look at that.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council. You might remember me from the last meeting. My name is Jessica Parks. I'm a resident of Avalon. I'm a mother of three and I would like to give an update to the council and say a few words on behalf of the families that reside here on the island. First, I would like to give appreciation to the first responders for all their courage and support during the recent tragedy involving my son and the terrible accident that occurred on January 9th. They truly saved his life. They really did. And I would also like to express our eternal gratitude to the community for all the support and generosity in helping our son and our family in his recovery. Um, this community is strong and the prayers are being heard and I urge the council to hear our prayers. We want all of our children to remain safe, you know, on, on all levels. Um, we can see that the enforcement has increased and we appreciate the efforts being made. I have made, I have many friends and family in law enforcement and I know what a challenging job it can be and also how rewarding it can be knowing that you are helping make your community a safer place. The job is not easy, nor should it be. Uh, protecting the children should be the number one priority, always. Um, above all else, um, we ask the city to help enforcement make their presence known and help them enforce these existing laws that are in place for safety purposes. I and many parents would like to suggest the presence of a deputy near the school campus during high traffic hours, if possible, if, if possible. We think that, um, that this could curb any issues that we're seeing with the children recklessly speeding through high traffic areas. We believe the children and parents would be more inclined to obey traffic safety laws, helmet requirements, general respect for fellow pedestrians. Um, it is a much-needed service that might save others from hefty medical expenses and other children, like my son, a lifetime of medical challenges that, you know, he's, he is going to face. Many island teens also lack the ability to get properly licensed here and it would be a great service to the community if there was a way to make that service available somehow to these kids because they are being cited, you know, now for not having proper licensing while driving golf carts and on those things. And we appreciate that. We, we, we want to see those, you know, that kind of enforcement because it's, it will help, it will help make a change, you know, as well as having a deputy onsite, on campus during those, you know, high tra- during school hours, like when they come, when they go, that kind of thing. It will, it'll just, it'll help. Instead of, instead of creating, um, more citations, it would just influence them to do the right thing. Um, so anyways, thank you for listening to our concerns and prayers and please help the island and families return to a safe and normal state. Please help the enforcement secure proper facilities and means of holding those accountable for disregarding the rules in place. Our son is still in recovery and we all pray for him to return home soon. Um, he may never be the same after this incident, but we, we hope that this never happens to another child on the island. So thank you for your time and all your efforts.
Jessica.
Thank you for listening.
Our prayers are with you.
Thank you.
Yes. Any, hey, consent calendar.
Uh, thank you. First item on the consent calendar, City Council minutes, approval of the minutes from the January 21st, 2025 regular city council meeting. Item two, warrants, seeking approval of total expenditures for December 14th, 2024 through January 24th, 2025 totaling $4,249,182.54. Item three, uh, fiscal year 24, 25, second quarter treasurer's report. Uh, item four, city manager employment agreement. Item five, Los Angeles County Public Health Services contract. Item six, resolution approving the blanket authority to apply for grant funds from Los Angeles County Regional Park and Open Space District for Measure A funding for projects and programs. Item se- seven, um, accept the, authorize the harbor master to renew the waterside permits for 2025. Item eight, authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with Sagecrest Planning Environmental LLC for on-call planning consultant services for a three-year term for an annual cumulative total not to exceed $150,000. Item nine, authorize, uh, to provide onsite engineering and support services for the wastewater treatment plant control system, uh, through La Masters Company. Uh, item 10, authorize the city manager or is designated to develop and solicit a request for proposals from qualified firms to implement a citywide paving repair program.
I would like us to pull number 10 for a little bit of a discussion.
And I just wanted to say on item four as well, uh, I'm excited to have that signed and thankful for you to stick around for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
I think it's the feedback we've gotten from everyone in town, um, and it's our feedback too, so. Um, with that, I'll move to approve items one through nine on consent.
There a second?
I'll second.
Ooh, stereo. I think, is this a Bob Greenlaw question? The paving?
Item 10.
Yeah, item 10. So.
Good evening, counsel.
Hi. So talking about $850,000, some of, and some money, for example, maybe Edison or Vons might have to pitch in when we start doing streets that they've impacted, people like that?
Yeah, so under the Franchise Act of 1937, um, they are responsible for any cuts, you know, any damage they do to our facilities.
Okay. Do, do we, the whole town needs to be redone. We know that, right? So how do, how do you know where you're, are we going to do any full-on streets like, like, uh, a really bad one is, well, they're all bad.
Can I make the answer? Because it's been presented to us before.
I know.
They had surveyors come out.
Okay.
And take surveys of all the areas that need to be fixed. So they have little yellow vests, little machines, they went out and surveyed them all.
Okay.
They're going to cut those out, fill them, and then when they're all done, we're going to slow the roads.
So, yeah, that's what the scope of what we're trying to get accomplished in the near future, okay? So you'll have, we're working also on a paving program, okay, so that you would have what a vision is over the next 10 years of what you can do because there's quite an investment that you need to make in the community. Lot of the damage that you see right now is not because of vehicles, it's because of utility cuts and it's also because utility lines are not in very good shape, salt water, freshwater, uh, whatever's getting fixed. And some of those things need to be addressed before we put a full overlay over the road because otherwise you're going to put the, uh, branch, just like we did on St. Catherine's Way, but you're going to be out there cutting that pavement. So what do we do in the meantime? We go and we make those repairs to those utility cuts because they're responsibility of the individual utilities, but we do it under a city contract because it's the most cost-effective way to get it done. Everybody pays their fair share. Then we go back to what happened approximately eight, nine years ago was a seal coat throughout the whole community and then it starts looking good again and that holds the road. A seal coat should be put on about every seven years. Okay? So we're behind right now, but remember we went through COVID? We had no general fund dollars for this. Um, now we're catching up to that. We're playing catch-up. So that's why you're going to see a rather large utility funded project with, and then a slurry seal, so it, do the inlays, what we call them inlays, not overlays, that's the utility repairs, do the crack sealing around them. That's where they go around the whole edge of it. Let that sit for a few months and let the traffic run over it, then you do a slurry seal. Okay? And then while we're doing that, we need to be talking about what's, what's up for the next 10 years, okay?
There are cracks in our, not where their utility lines, there are cracks in our roads going this way and they're this thick or this wide, you know, and.
The crack seal, we'll fill those.
Will be under this.
Yes. Yes, yes. That's, that's what we're attempting to do. We'll see what the prices come out and then we'll report back of what, what our scope is. That's what the, the, the scope of what we're trying to do here, okay? But we are putting a program together. We're working, I'm working with Jackie to do that too.
Yeah.
So you'll know what's going to happen within the next 10 years and you can select those roadways that will get what you want.
Okay.
Right, and I'd like to add, I mean, we, we have engaged, uh, all AI is not bad. So we've engaged a contractor that's going to come out, do a video assessment of all our roads and then categorize them into, so we, we can prioritize these. And this is something that, a tool we can go back to over the next 10 years to prioritize the roads to get them repaired.
So that's called a pavement management plan and that'll freshen up our pavement management plan, which is approximately eight or nine years old, you know? And if you don't have any money to put to it, you know, the same result is going to be, it, it just gets, keeps on getting worse, okay?
I got it.
So now we'll start addressing it, okay?
Thank you, Bob, and thank you.
Then I make a motion to approve item 10 on the consent calendar.
I'll second it. Okay. Harbor master.
General business. Next three are going to be, uh, waterside, either new or amended existing waterside project applications. Kevin? Didn't mean to startle you back there. Were you planning on addressing these individually or if counsel has any questions?
Yeah, question, that's fine.
Item, we'll start with item 11, waterside project application for Catalina Island Mermaids, DBA Avalon Bear Bottoms. Uh, the applicant is in, was in the audience today?
She was.
She was here.
Yeah, I saw her.
But she left. Um, but this is a, uh, this is a new, a new application. Kevin, if you want to briefly describe it?
Sure. So they, um, Catalina Mermaids, they want to basically do business as Avalon Bear Bottoms. They want to do boat bottom cleaning, um, like, like people drop their cell phones, things like that, uh, search and recovery. And then, um, so, you know, she had a, actually had a waterside permit previously for her mermaid business, but, um, we determined that she did not need that. So she's basically, uh, carrying it over to a new, you know, doing business as this new boat bottom cleaning business, so.
Are there other people that do that now?
Um, well, Paul, you know, Rambo has done it. I don't know if he's going to continue to do it or not, but I, I don't know on that one. So it is a very needed, uh, you know, service here in the harbor, so. And then we'll see what else we have.
We have to do them one at a time.
Start with that one.
Does somebody want to make the affirmative?
I'll make the rep, I'll make the record. Go ahead.
Do they, do they, I'm just looking at this, do they have to pay wharfage fee?
I'm sorry, who?
There's, there's a section two, 10 dash two dot 402, use of harbor-related facilities, um, and it's talking about wharfage, docking and landing and use fees. Is, is that $3 for each passenger so landed? Why is that in there? They're not landing any passengers, they're just getting in a boat. What?
I think it's the general.
That's the whole section. That's the whole section related to that. In particular, doesn't apply to that.
Okay. Just, just making sure. I was like, what? Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay. I will make the affirmative finding that conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met and the, and grant the waterside project application to Catalina Island Mermaids doing business as Avalon Bear Bottoms with the following conditions. Notification will be made to the harbor office personnel prior to dive operations being conducted. The harbor master retains the ability to restrict or curtail operations when conditions dictate. Current registration for skiff used in dive operations will be provided to the harbor master annually. Skiffed used in dive operations will be secured to one of the public dinghy docks and meet all requirements for use of these docks. Personal conduct die, conduct, personnel conducting dives will have current and applicable professional certifications for dive operations and take all necessary safety precautions while operating within the harbor. Applicant will obtain a business license for Avalon Bear Bottoms, separate from Catalina Island Mermaids LLC. This waterside permit applies to the conditions of use for Avalon Bear Bottoms. Activities related to Catalina Mermaids will begin and end from the shore. Applicant abides by the standard list of conditions for waterside permit holders.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Thank you. Item number 12 is waterside permit application for Island Enterprises Inc., DBA Catalina Adventure Tours.
So this is a, a change of ownership, uh, basically, and so the waterside permit did not transfer the change of ownership. Obviously, this business in the past has had a waterside permit, um, and this is basically just, um, getting them into waterside permit currently for this year.
The applicant's here if you wanted to say anything to the applicant. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make the, I'll make a motion to, uh, that the affirmative finding that the conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met and grant the waterside project application to Island Enterprises DBA Catalina Tours contingent upon the following conditions. One, to allow Island Enterprises to utilize one non-exclusive use float in position E on the pier for their tour boat operation utilizing the semi-submersible nautilus, U.S. Coast Guard Documentation 1079045. The city will not charge fees for the floats as long as it is a use that is non-exclusive to Island Enterprises. Two, to allow occasional use of cabrio mull floats to pick up groups as long as Island Enterprises does not interfere with cross-channel carriers or cruise ship traffic. Three, require city council approval if Island Enterprises elects to utilize their PUC tariff on-call charter service to pick up passengers in all areas specified on the tariff, excluding services between any vessels, points and places, starting with and ending within the city, uh, Avalon City limits. Four, if the city council approves at a later date, allow Island Enterprises on-call charters the ability to utilize any green pier float and allow occasional use of the cabrio mull floats to pick up groups as long as Island Enterprises does not interfere with cross-channel carriers or cruise ship traffic. And five, require Island Enterprises to pay nightly mooring fees for their vessels.
I just have a quick question, but they really can't act like, um, like kicking people up on their boats and putting them up, you know, like. They can't do like.
It's not a shoreboat.
Okay, they can't act like a shoreboat. Okay. All righty. Okay, so moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
All eyes.
Item 13. Um, waterside product, change condition of use for Avalon Aquatic Excursions.
So this one here is actually, um, a business that already had a waterside permit, um, from last year and that they're changing their conditions of use, um, from basically a six-pack charter operation. Uh, now what they would like to do is, um, transport passengers to and from Whites landing and the commercial operation there and back to Avalon. Um, so that's, that's the change of use, their conditions of use.
Questions or comments?
I'll make a motion, make the affirmative finding that conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met and grant the waterside project application to Avalon Aquatic Excursions with the following conditions. One, all operations to load and unload passengers will take place on the pleasure pier floats with occasional use of the floats at the cabrio mull. Applicant must not interfere with the commercial boat traffic, including crosstown ferry and/or cruise ship tender traffic. During summer months, applicant will make all efforts to utilize the shoreboat float at the end float of, of the pier. Two, applicant abides by the standards list of conditions for waterside permit holders. Three, applicant meets all regulatory requirements for passenger-carrying vessels of this type, including any U.S. Coast Guard and Public Utilities Commissioned requirements. Four, prior to vessel acquisition, applicant will provide the harbor master with the technical specifications, including make, model, length, beam, propulsion type, passenger capacity for approval. Any future proposed changes to these specifications will require prior harbor master approval in writing.
I'll second. Okay, call for the vote.
All eyes.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, item 14, we're, we're happy to present this to, to council and that's the city vehicle storage yard policy. Uh, just want to thank Assistant City Manager Jocelyn Francis for taking the lead on this and, and, uh, we are just about there with the policy being put in place tonight. Jocelyn.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, I have a present, quick presentation for the next two items. Thank you, Jamie. Um, okay, so, uh, we're here tonight to, uh, approve a policy for a vehicle storage yard. Uh, the purpose is to establish clear guidelines for vehicle for vehicle and bicycle storage, towing, and disposal efforts. There's a picture on the slide here. It's pretty close to being complete. So, this area was an underutilized space next to the household hazardous waste drop-off site across from the wastewater treatment plant. So, Public Works has been amazing in working with myself and the sheriff's office and code enforcement in creating this, this space on city-owned land. So it included paving, fencing, that Conex box for bicycles and other small vehicles. We have a need, as you all know, to address abandoned vehicles within our city limits and illegal off-road vehicles, ensure compliance with the California Vehicle Code and the municipal code, and then maintain public safety and proper enforcement. So, policy overview, we touched on vehicle yard security measures, the active towing vehicles, bicycle storage, property release procedures, disposal procedures, compliance and reporting, and collaboration and training efforts. So, the operational guidelines. So as far as towing, a tow could be initiated by LASD deputy or a city code enforcement officer. Code enforcement primarily is responding, responsible for abandoned vehicles, whereas a deputy may pull somebody over for a moving violation. We also discussed internally private properties. There's obviously abandoned vehicles on private properties and how that'll work. At the next city council meeting, we'll be coming to you for a fee schedule adjustment to make sure that we're recovering our costs for those efforts. Tows, all toes will be approved by staff from the sheriff's office, regardless if it's a deputy or a code enforcement officer. And then the tow operator for the city will be members of our public works team, specifically the mechanics. They're currently going through tow operator training that's approved through the CHP. The department recently implemented and purchased a Zuzu flatbed truck, so that'll be the vehicle used to, to tow these vehicles. In addition, for storage, like I said, there's the physical security improvements that we've made to that space. As far as paperwork, logs, and inventories, code enforcement will take the lead on that. The Conex box you saw the, the picture of for those smaller vehicles. As far as release, the sheriff's office will verify ownership and current registration, and then the city will collect the fees and physically handle the release of the vehicle. For illegal off-highway vehicles, we have drafted a waiver of liability that's been approved by the, by BBK. So, legal compliance, the sheriff's office and the city will follow the applicable vehicle codes and municipal codes for toes and entry. The vehicle lean initiation will be completed by Kruger Tow, which has an existing contract with the sheriff's office. So although the city of Avalon will physically tow the vehicle, store it on our property, Kruger Tow will be sent the, what they call CHP 180, the paperwork, so they can start the lean process for that vehicle, should it remain unclaimed. And then, the city will maintain all records and releases for three years. As far as disposal, unclaimed vehicles will be held for a minimum of 30 days on the island before being transported over town and released to Kruger Tow. For bicycles and off-road vehicles will be kept for a minimum of 90 days, and that aligns with the California Government Code. Unclaimed vehicles, as I mentioned, will be transferred to Kruger Tow, and unclaimed bicycles may be donated, auctioned, or recycled, depending on their condition.
Excuse me, do we, in terms of getting them shipped back, shipped back over, if they're vehicles, the city doesn't have to pay, right? Because they paid when it came over. The same with the e-bikes, they probably came over on Freightline, so we don't have to pay for them to go back?
Yeah, the freight service historically has been very accommodating, great partnership with the city and, and, yeah, transporting, whether, yeah, it's bicycles or golf carts and things of that nature back over town. So, we're very grateful for that partnership, yeah.
Excellent, excellent.
So as far as next steps, before you, we've got the, the vehicle storage policy drafted for tonight, and then we'll complete installation of lighting and some other features for the tow yard. We'll return to city council for adjustment to the fee schedule. We'll ensure that our, everybody involved in this process is trained and in compliance with state law and our own codes. And then, from time to time, we'll review effectiveness and update policy, and we may come back and with some lessons learned along the way, so. So, yeah, that concludes my presentation this evening.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just curious, how does this affect the boot program? Cause I saw, I saw a vehicle with a boot on it parked by the post office? Yeah, by the, by the island company offices for several days? So, what's that all about?
Yeah, so, there is a vehicle code that talks about, has very different, I don't know, there's probably like 10 different legal authorities for sworn officer to tow a vehicle. And so usually for a boot, it's related to vehicle registration. So if your vehicle registration's not current for six months or longer, it, you know, the, there's a tow authority that says a police officer could tow that vehicle, as an example. Yeah, something that hasn't moved in over 72 hours are the vehicle code and our own municipal code, outline steps in impounding a vehicle that hasn't moved for over 72 hours and the process for that. So, we can still use the boot. Alternatively, the vehicle could be towed and transported to the yard.
The problem, in the past, we didn't really have the ability to tow the vehicle. So, thus the boots.
Yeah, that's why I'm wondering, is this gonna negate the boots? Or are we gonna boot, and if they don't, if they don't take care of it in 72 hours, then we tow?
I think we'll still have the boot as an option, but like Jocelyn says, now that we have the ability to, we have a vehicle that can actually tow those vehicles and remove them in a storage yard where we can take. So, hopefully that will solve more of the boot problem. But if we, if we are full at the tow yard until we can get them barged off, we might use, still use the boot, I mean, it's still an option.
Okay, but, but ultimately, we would like to move away from the boot and just go straight to towing and, and put them in the yard, and you're gonna have to pay 150 bucks to get it towed, and then 200 bucks to get it out, plus your registration.
I think that's preferable, yes.
So, so get on it, people. I like the fact that we're moving away from the boots, cause, you know, it's, it's sitting there, and that's, that's a heavy parking area, and it was taking up parking, so I like that we're moving away from the boots. Okay.
Well, thank you. What, what is your pleasure, council?
I make a motion to approve the city of Avalon Vehicle Storage Yard Policy.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, call for the vote.
All ayes.
Okay, item 15, last item tonight is introduction and first reading of an ordinance repealing and replacing Title IV, Public Safety, Chapter 4 dash 1, Bicycles, and repealing Chapter 4 dash 10 of the Avalon Municipal Code.
All right, this evening, we have a draft bicycle ordinance for review, your review. The idea is to completely repeal what we had before and replace it with this, with this draft. So, as everyone in here knows, there's a growing cycling community. We've, see a lot of bicycles, e-bicycles, and, and other two-wheeled vehicles on the roadway. The city is seeking clarification to definitions of what it means to be a bicycle versus a motorcycle versus a motorbike. And the existing ordinance lacks lack clarity. The proposed ordinance does align with the California Vehicle Code to enhance safety and compliance and give the option for, for the deputies to issue an administrative citation versus a moving violation. The key provisions of the ordinance include bicycle registration, compliance with California traffic laws, restricted areas and use, speed limits, helmets and age restrictions, and parking and sidewalk regulations. So for the implementation and enforcement of this ordinance, first is registration. So registration is free, you can do it online. You'll be issued a decal or a sticker for the bicycle, and we're hoping a partnership with the sheriff's office and the Avalon Schools will help really bring our registration program up to speed. One of the changes from the last ordinance to this ordinance is it cut out the requirement of registering bicycles for, for bicycle rental companies. We've removed that, so even, it'll be a requirement even for businesses. Next, public outreach, of course. As you know, the sheriff's office, they've hosted town halls, they've done school programming. We're gonna continue using our social media pages to get the word out there, and again, continue to partner with our Avalon Schools. And then the last component is enforcement. So, you know, certain fines for violations using that administrative citation as an option in addition to moving violations, vehicle impoundment or bicycle impoundment for violations of this code, and then encouraging parental responsibility. So, we're gonna need to update this. Here's one of our brochures that we have available, kinda going over the different bicycle types, the definitions, which will be clarified in our ordinance and our code. They'll align with the vehicle code. And again, registration is free and, and online. So the call to action tonight is to introduce this first reading of an ordinance. After tonight, or right now, public comment, open for questions, feedback. I wanna collaborate and make sure this ordinance makes sense for all of our stakeholders involved, and then return to city council for adoption and continue our public outreach efforts. And that concludes my presentation.
Very well outlined, I love that chart that you threw up, that's really wonderful.
Yeah, when I went to one of the community outreach things that the sheriffs did, they had pictures of the actual bikes with the class under it, which I, to me, seemed more effective. That one had like a ton of information. So it's like, this picture is cool, this picture is cool. This one is not. You can't ride this on the, on the street, you know? So, I, I, I would like to see a brochure like that in, in public outreach as well.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to say, we, we got back to Irma with the Sheriff's Department and had the same comment, so she had a bunch of those printed off, and she's been passing those out to kids and parents in her interaction and her public outreach, and I believe we have some out front, too.
Okay, perfect.
And I also just wanna add, in my conversations earlier today with Sergeant Klein, he just indicated to me that the citations they've issued for not wearing a helmet have been prosecuted. They just got notified by a parent here that in fact, the DA did prosecute it, did pursue it, and the judge fined the individual $193 is the going rate for not wearing a helmet. And that word is, we'll get out quickly, so that's, you know, for, for the parents that are out there, it's just, you know, how, how you can confirm with your child to make sure that helmet's on, not only for their safety, but also for your, your pocketbook, so.
So that goes for all the visitors over here renting bikes, too?
Yep.
Anybody riding a bicycle, any kind of bicycle, helmet.
And I really like that it has no riding on sidewalks. Thank you for putting that in there, cause that's very critical.
I'm gonna talk to Vaughn's about getting a bike rack.
They have a bike.
They have a bike rack.
Oh, I, there's been so much. I have seen people though parking in a parking spot, and it's like, oh my god.
They're on Beacon though, yeah. Thank you. Excellent presentation, okay, council?
Well, only, there were two things that came up at the community discussions that we had. One was the possibility, I think, that we just need to look at for future. Captain King had mentioned in ensuring the information gets out to those that are renting from a business, that there could potentially be a short video. I think that's actually a great idea. I think it's a way of ensuring the information is consistent. I think people do much better, unfortunately, with visual rather than reading through things. They usually just sign a waiver and don't actually read all the content. And so I think that that's smart. The other topic of discussion that I think we just need to maybe talk about and think through, the majority of our roads are not necessarily super great for bicycles. They're highly sloped, more than most roads are on average. They have a lot of loose ripper rap and gravel on them. So, one of the questions that I had asked was if it made sense to just require helmets for all bike riders, not just for electric bikes or people under 18.
I think everybody has to have a helmet, when you're, when you're a minor.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying everybody.
That's in there, I thought.
Over 18 is what I'm saying.
Over 18.
I'm saying everybody, it would make it way easier to enforce it. There's not a question between which type of bike it is and how old you are.
Cause I had requests that all electric bikes, for anybody riding an electric bike, had to wear the helmet.
You're saying with bicycles as well?
Every, every single bicycle. I'm saying bicycles in general. You can get going fast enough on a regular bike, especially down those hills, that you can hurt yourself significantly if you are not aware of how that road is or what's in front of you. So, part of me says that for the safety of everyone, that may make sense to look at doing for our community. It may not make sense for every community, but we don't have bike lanes, we don't have bike spaces, we have roads that are definitely not smooth for bikes. So, I'd like to see it brought back to a future council meeting just to see if that's something that the community agrees with, that we agree with, because I think it could prevent unnecessary accidents that could be avoided or at least minimized. So, yeah, no, that's fine, I know. A lot, a lot of people have feelings about it one way or the other, that's why I'm bringing it up for discussion, so.
No, that's excellent, thank you. Okay.
With that, I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon. Sorry, do we need to do public comment, or we?
Is there anybody who would like to comment? We haven't been asking. Go ahead.
So I'll move to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the city of Avalon repealing and replacing Title IV, Chapter 4 dash 1, and repealing Chapter 4 dash 10 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding bicycles, electric bicycles, and motorized bicycles.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, call for the vote.
Um, just a, just a moment of clarification. Did you, you did not want it to come back then, prior to the adoption for the amendment for the helmets?
I think that, I think we can move forward with this, but I think we need to have discussion that's more than just the, yeah. I think we can move forward with this right now as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All ayes.
Well, and then maybe another discussion or look in. What are the rules about skateboards?
It's in there.
Skateboards are in there, too?
Yeah.
Oh, shit. Oh, well, thank you. Helmets on skateboards, and skateboards on the streets, not on the sidewalk. Okay, thank you. Okay. No further business, I wanna say goodnight, Tony. Meeting adjourned.